Is that going to be all, would that could it be all?
The meat, that's gonna go away if you say.
Oh, yeah.
The test of the emergency.
Yes.
That's right, yeah. We're just trying to get beyond that, you know. Good morning. The time is now ten oh one AM and the board is present state board of education work session meeting of May twenty first twenty twenty four is called to order. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Dr. Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton absent. McMillan absent. Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very much. This time is Liz Evans, State Board Executive, will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Reis, Chairperson of the State Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table is Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, NASB delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, and Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter. Back to my right seated is Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. The principal item on today's agenda is a discussion with the parents of the four Oxford High School students, Madison, Justin, Tate, and Hannah, who were tragically killed on November thirtieth twenty twenty one. We welcome and share in person with the parents our condolences. Nicole Bosale, mother of Madison, Craig Schilling, father of Justin, Buck Mir, father of Tate, and Stephen Saint Juliana, father of Hannah. Each of the first three families will share initial reflections of ten to fifteen minutes each, followed by questions from the board. Subsequently, Mr. Saint Juliana will share recommendations on behalf of the families, followed again by questions from the board. No board action is required or expected at this time. The session is capped at twelve thirty PM. Public comment is available in the afternoon for any other parent or member of the public. Parents, welcome.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for being here. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Craig Schilling, as you know. But for, if you do not know, I am the father of Justin Schilling. He was one of the four kids killed in the Oxford School mass shooting back in November two thousand twenty one. I bring myself before this board under the very best of circumstances. I stand here united with parents from my community, some of whom have experienced the same loss, and some of those who have been advocating and supporting us from the very beginning of all of this. We are here seeking your help. It is our hope that you truly hear what we have to say and that you are willing to use your influence and the support, or in support for the resolutions needed to address the systemic failures that allowed the tragedy in Oxford to take place. As a grieving father, I speak to you from the heart. I may mess up or fumble a bit, and that is because my heart is broken. And even after two and a half years, it still bleeds, which makes it difficult to talk about this tragedy. Something more difficult than talking about it, though, is seeing and understanding the failures that allowed it to happen. It's knowing that unless things change, it will absolutely happen again. Having just gone through the criminal aspects surrounding the shooting, I find myself unsatisfied with the actions taken in the aftermath to prevent any future tragedies. It is for this reason that I'm here today. In the wake of the tragedy, information and facts poured in from all over, and the criminal investigation had begun. Over time, the prosecution put together a case. It was tried, and we all know the outcome of those trials. But we, what we, what you may not know is that there was a lot more information and facts brought to light than was used in court. Some of this information was not used in court because it involved the Oxford High School. And the prosecutor, prosecution didn't criminally charge anybody within that, within that school. Some of this information was not used in the court because it involved, okay, here we go. Okay, so no charges equals no trial, and no trial means that all that information doesn't come out to the public. I cannot consciously be satisfied with any of this, knowing that valuable information out there regarding the safety and well-being of the children within our schools is not being utilized efficiently. As you will hear during these discussions, there were in fact several systemic breakdowns by the school district that occurred leading up to the tragedy. Yet to this day, two and a half years later, nothing has been done. Children have lost their lives and nothing has been done. They should speak volumes to each and every one of you for the simple reason that you are all driving the buses here. And it is your duty as the bus drivers to pick up our kids each day and safely return them home. Well, on November twenty first, or I'm sorry, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, four kids did not return home safely, and lives were changed forever. In your positions, I would think that you would want to know exactly what went wrong to be able to address it appropriately. Currently, and especially after I've learned of certain policies that have been around since two thousand fourteen and supposedly implemented in two thousand eighteen, I still do not know how this tragedy was ever able to happen. Which leads me to a couple of questions that have been on my mind for some time, so I'm just gonna fire away here. Do you all know what went wrong that allowed the shooting in Oxford to happen? Because it seems logical to me that a governing body should go to great lengths to ensure that they are aware of any mishaps or insufficiencies within their system, especially ones that lead to the deaths of four children. Or does Bessie Little's things like governmental immunity hide the pertinent information from the governing body itself? It makes absolutely no sense to me at all to not look at every aspect and seek the truth from every individual involved in a tragedy like this. How can we improve if we're not able to learn? I mean, after all, aren't you all in the business of learning? Or is it just selective learning? What kind of examples are we setting? Without the ability to learn and make the appropriate changes based on current law and policy, can any of you look me in the eye and tell me honestly that this will never happen again? Have you all read the guidepost report? Have you guys all read the guidepost report? Are you familiar with it at all? The guidepost report is a report that was done by a third-party investigation company heard by the school district. It's a lengthy report that took several months to complete. It costs a lot of money, and it highlights many of the shortcomings within the district. I'm not in the business of running schools, so I don't know the challenges that exist in doing so. But from my standpoint, it seems that there is something broken within the system. And if we don't fix it and start enforcing our own policy, history will repeat itself. For probably all the reasons that you can think of, the past two and a half years of my life have just been miserable. I have found it very difficult to find life after the unthinkable has happened. The loss of a child truly is a parent's worst nightmare. But I feel that the nature and circumstances surrounding that loss have the ability to amplify and elevate that nightmare to uncomfortable levels, especially when finding out that their death was completely avoidable, had policies in power. I'd like to close real quick here by mentioning something that was always talked about and used in my household growing up, when I was a child. My parents were very adamant about instilling the fact that if something was worth doing, it was worth doing right. And it was a, it's a phrase that I use a lot in the hearing of my own children. And that is, and I certainly think that we can all agree that when it comes to our children, it's worth doing right. So please, I ask of you all to take the time to review the proposed resolutions because the price paid for this information was immeasurable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Buck Mir. Tate Mir's dad, who was murdered on your watch. So I apologize, I'm probably gonna bring it a little strong, but I don't apologize because I'm mad. I'm upset with the response. I'm mad that we, I'm mad that we lost Tate. And I'm mad at the response of Oxford Schools and our government. I'm not gonna waste my time telling you about Sherry and I's incredible son, Trenton Ty's awesome brother, fun cousin that he was, the loyal friend that he was, and the outstanding role model he was to his peers and the youth of Oxford. I wanna talk about Tate to people who have a genuine interest in learning about who he was and what he stood for. The system doesn't have any interest in Tate Mir. He's just a lost life and a gun statistic. So Craig brought it up, and I wanna go around the table, and it's a simple yes or no answer. Did you read the guidepost report?
Yes.
Did you? You? Yeah?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Yes, it was the foundation of two resolutions I presented to the board.
Okay. Now, one thing to note is I think that only tells half the story. That was a pointed investigation that was led by an insurance attorney. So it's not a full investigation. So we don't, we don't get to see the full systemic failure that happened. So, and our AG refuses to do a, a state investigation because she thinks it's gonna be a waste of time because of the power of the union. Teachers can't speak out. They can't speak up because they're bullied by the union. So the AG doesn't wanna waste the time. So we lost four lives, and the AG thinks a thorough investigation's a waste of time because not everybody's gonna talk, which is crazy to me. So yeah, so the education industry's response to this tragic event has been horrific. This event was tragic. Although the response from the education industry has shown that they don't think it was tragic, it was just an event, a statistical event. Everybody sits in silence, hiding behind immunity, and taking zero accountability. The exact thing that we teach the kids in school every day is accountability. Let's get into the nuts and bolts of where we are today. We're in a mental health crisis. According to twenty twenty one, US Surgeon General's advisory, the portion of high school students reporting persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness increased by forty percent from oh nine to twenty nineteen. Students seriously considering attempting suicide increased by thirty-six percent, while students creating a suicide plan increased by forty-four percent. These are real statistics. These aren't my opinion. As of twenty nineteen, nearly thirty-seven percent of high school students reported having persistent feelings of loneliness, a ninety-seven percent increase from twenty twelve. It's important to note that this measure does not include students who sometimes or often experience feelings of loneliness, and therefore underestimates the totality of this phenomenon. According to CDC, more than one in three high school students experienced poor mental health during the pandemic, and nearly half of the students, half of students felt persistently sad or hopeless. In twenty twenty one, gun-related incidents at schools more than doubled across the country from any previous year. The two hundred and forty-nine nationwide incidents in twenty twenty one topped twenty nineteen's previous high of a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and ten percent increase. In Oakland County, school threats and related prosecutions skyrocketed following the Oxford shooting. Prosecutor McDonald's office charged only one threat case in twenty twenty one before the shooting. Since then, her office has charged more than forty cases. That's from the Detroit News. In Macomb County, threat cases have gone up at an alarming rate to almost fifty cases, where criminal charges were filed in twenty twenty two, up from twenty-five cases in twenty twenty one. That's a hundred percent jump. In Wayne County, Prosecutor Kim Worthy said it only had seven threat cases brought to the office for possible charges before the Oxford shooting. Since then, threats have spiked exponentially, and the office has handled a hundred and nineteen requests. In the community of South Lyon, they had six school threats in a six-week span that required multiple lockdowns on school grounds. And I was watching this board meeting, I think it was two meetings ago, and we want more time to research. The research is there. The clock is ticking. We're two and a half years later, and we've done nothing. Here's some more data. While only, while only an extremely small percentage of adolescents who experience loneliness and/or depression ever act violently, eighty-seven percent of youth who do commit an active mass violence were in a noticeable state of crisis before the event transpired. And eighty percent exhibited signs of suicide. So let's talk about, let's relate that to Oxford shooting. So eighty-seven, like I mentioned, eighty-seven percent of the youth who did, who do commit an act of violence were in a noticeable state of crisis. So here, here's state of crisis examples for the Oxford shooting. Saber assessment. You guys familiar with the Saber assessment, that mental health evaluation that we do? It was flaming red for the shooter. Flaming red. His homework assignment in Spanish class that was sent to the counseling office where he wrote about being a mistake. So two examples of a kid in crisis. Seventy-eight percent of school shooters leaked their plans in advance. I'm gonna give you three examples of the Oxford shooting where his plan was leaked. You guys familiar with the math assignment where he had drawn up the gun and the bloody person? Help! Blood everywhere. My life is worthless. That math assignment? That was a leakage plan. He was searching bullets on his phone. More leakage. He was watching, he got caught watching violent videos on his phone in class. More leakage. And I mentioned that eighty percent, eighty percent are suicidal prior to an incident? Well, Counselor Hopkins diagnosed him with suicidal ideation. Which means that he should have, through the current, they didn't have the EOP implemented, but the current policy they had, the Suicide Risk Assessment Protocol that was in place, there was a form he should have filled out. It's Form fifty-three fifty F two. And there's a question on that form that asks specifically about availability of means, which we all know what that means. Access to, access to weapons, right? He didn't fill that form out. He would ask the question, we would have found out, he would have found, Counselor Hopkins would have found out about the availability of means. Now, we wanna talk about access to a gun. The school knew he had access to a gun because Pam Fine, the restorative practices coordinator, I think that's what she was at the time, had left a voicemail with the parents after he got caught searching the bullets on his phone and talked about they, their hobby as a family, shooting the guns. So they knew he had access to a gun. Some more statistics for you. Of, of school shooters, ninety-one percent are current or former students. It's almost always an inside job. This is real data and real proof that this tragedy could have and should have been prevented. So one of the things that we're advocating for at forty-two strong is all those examples of, of state of crisis, leaking the plans, suicidal assessment. All of that data was there and ready for the taking, but it was all in different spots. And nobody's talking because nobody's accountable to talk. They don't have to talk because they, they don't, they don't have to face the music. Right? So one of the things that we're proposing at forty-two strong is, which, which will bring all this stuff into one big pot, and when, and you could assemble a threat assessment team. And now you can make decisions based on real data, and you can add more to that. You can add all the, all the data that the school's already collected. Grades, attendance, disciplinary actions, participation in sports, is it dropping or not? Right? You can put all this stuff in one pot and be able to make decisions. We're in a mental health crisis. Those are all the stats I gave you. That's all the research I gave you. And we had nobody at that school that could help this kid, that could identify that he was at the top of the mountain in crisis. Top of the mountain. The evidence shows it. He was at the top of the mountain. But yet, no changes have been made. The role has changed and continues to do so. Our schools must respond, own, and adapt to these changes. It's time for Michigan schools to be accountable to adjust to this new reality and industry standards, just like we do in the private industry. I wanna be clear here. Schools are not in business to raise or parent kids, but schools are in the business of kids and must adapt and own the industry trends, and the data shows that we're at a mental health crisis. It's time for Michigan schools to be the cornerstone of their communities and be that support system that the kids need. I said support system, not parents or babysitters, like everybody in the industry likes to argue. Support, support for a kid that is in crisis, support for kids to not enter a crisis. The last thing I wanna mention, the only thing, the only change our schools and government are interested in making is the hardening of schools and gun legislation. I haven't done any research on the hardening of schools yet, but I would love to know what, what that research says about what it does to our kids' mental health. I guarantee you it's not good. It's probably like walking into a prison. So that's, that's the only thing that's been addressed since the Oxford shooting, the hardening of schools and gun legislation. Have we thought about a systematic upstream approach to help our kids before they go into crisis? Yes, upstream, upstream. We all wanna focus on when the kid's already got a gun in their hand. Let's get upstream. Let's address these issues before they go into crisis. Let's put checks and balances in to help the kids. Enough with the low-hanging fruit. Let's get to work upstream. Some of this data that I, that I was mentioning, it was, it came from The Violence Project and Trigger Points. So I would highly advise that you all read those books. There's a lot of data out there, and the data shows that if we're implementing, if we're implementing policy based on data, not what's next to your name in R or D, we can stop these tragedies. We can stop them. If we had policy in place, if the EOP was in place, and I'm, and I'm assuming that EOB, EOP was based on a lot of this research, that kid doesn't slip through the cracks. But that kid slipped through the cracks because we don't have any accountability in schools like we do in the private world, like we teach the kids. That's all I got.
Good morning. Nicole Bosale, I'm Madison Baldwin's mom. Forgive me, but I'm gonna be a little raw with you guys in how I see the world now and throughout the educational system. Being a mom, there's certain times in the year that you get extremely excited about, you know. Three of the dates that I get extremely excited about prior to November thirtieth is May seventeenth, eleven twenty-two, and four twenty-nine. Those are the kid, those are my kids' birthdays. Those, those dates mean a lot to me. I have more dates now that I'm, I don't want to happen because I don't want the sadness to come over me. And that's April eighteenth, January first, January twenty-ninth, and May seventeenth. Those are the birthdays of Justin, Hannah, Madison, and Tate. You have to add November thirtieth in there, but you also have to add Christmas, Mother's Day, Thanksgiving. All these days that used to be extremely exciting for me are just pits in my stomach. And it's impossible to be a good mom and a grieving mom at the same time. It's impossible to watch my other kids succeed and knowing Madison isn't, she isn't gonna succeed in these things. What I've been through and what these families have been through, there's no comparison to it. What I've seen and watched to try to get some justice for my daughter is unbearable. I don't expect anybody to have to go through that. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wish it upon my worst enemy. But I have watched. But I have watched my daughter get murdered over and over and over again on a video. Just, just to get some kind of justice of what happened that day. And for me to have to watch that over and over and over again and still don't have the answers, that's a very poor excuse on why this has even happened. I don't wish, and forgive me because this is not gonna be easy, I don't wish any of you to have to see a gun put to one of your kids' head and it be pulled and watch your daughter slump over, or your son slump over on a floor ten feet away from Hannah. I don't, I don't expect you guys to see Tate Mir shot twice and his body flinch. I don't expect you guys to have to see Justin Schilling a pool of blood in the bathroom, knowing where he died, trying to save another child. These are things that you don't see, these are the things that we've had to see for the last two and a half years to get some kind of justice for our, our children. Entering Oxford, I'm sure something you don't know is Madison only was in Oxford for three months. She transferred from Clarkston Schools because she wanted to be in Oxford. And it was a big decision, being her senior year and moving on to her future. And I allowed it because that's, that's what we do, we, we make our, our children happy, we want them to be, have a fulfilling life. I didn't know much about Oxford, again, she was only there three months. I didn't know the layout of the school, I didn't know anything. So I had to learn these things through her death. I had to learn a lot of things about Oxford and what was happening. Madison was an exceptional student, just like the other three. She graduated, well, she would have graduated with a four-point-two GPA, she was fluent in French. She graduated sum cum laude, she's been on National Honor Society since Junior National Honor Society. She wanted to go to school for neuroscience, she wanted to become a behavioral analyst. She wanted to, she had so many dreams in twelve years of the school district. What was it for? So that a child, like Buck said, can slip through the cracks and ruin that for an entire family. A person that worked three jobs to make sure my daughter had everything she needed for school. Just gone. Gone within a second, because that's how long it took for Madison to die, a second. We hide behind this governmental immunity, a law that was revised in the nineteen-seventies. Well, we're here in the two thousand and twenties now, fifty years later, and this law hasn't even been revised. Things have happened, things have changed over this past fifty years, and yet we're still hiding behind a law that continues to allow teachers and educators to not do their best. Because why would you do your best if you can hide behind a law? Why would you ever try to have your teachers do better if they're always gonna have something that they can hide behind? It's disheartening to me in regards to the mental health aspect of the school and what Buck has said and Craig has said is it's extremely, it hits our family a lot different. Madison had a special needs brother, he's autistic, he's nonverbal. He doesn't see like other kids do. And now, my new fear is, not if he would get fine in school, my new fear is, is what if a shooter comes into his school? And how is he gonna react? Because he can't talk, he can't run, he can't do these things that neurotypical kids can do. And now I have to see through a different picture. I have to see, are the educators gonna protect him, are they gonna put him somewhere that he needs to be? Are they gonna make sure that he knows the procedures of what's gonna happen in school? All these different things that I have to think about because of the shooting. But it should be things that you guys have already been thinking about, it should be things that you have already been trying to get through the system. And the safety of the school is a factor in this, but so is the mental health. It, it needs to be a big factor. I have so many unanswered questions. I'm as, as the other families do, we're two and a half years into this and we still, I still don't know why my daughter died that day. Even though I, I know how she died, I don't know why she died. And it's devastating as a parent to not be able to give the answers to her siblings and, and understand, like Buck said, why this, this child fell through the cracks? Why he didn't get the help, he started writing things on his notebook in August. Two days after school started, he started writing things, pictures of guns and bullets, and saying, "My life is a mistake, my, my family isn't here for me," all these different things. And it, it consistently got worse as things went on. And then we have a counselor in an office and a resource educational person, and nobody seems to be able to get on the same page. Nobody knows what the protocols are for a school shooting, a threat assessment, any of these things, none of them know. Because you have one person saying there's suicidal ideation, you have another person saying, oh, it's, we're just researching bullets and it's like a video game, I don't need a call back. And then you have another person where you have, after the shooting, you have teachers walking around the school because they don't know what to do, you see teachers going all over the place, trying to figure out what's happening. It is complete chaos. There should be a threat assessment that we follow across the Board of State of Michigan, across the county, across... I don't want to think this is gonna happen again. But Oxford is very different. Oxford had a child that was in the counseling office that day and still was able to commit a mass murder. It's unacceptable, it should be unacceptable to all of you. I know we talked about guideposts. It's such an unfinished report. There are many teachers that have decided not to cooperate. And if the school district is paying three million dollars for a report, you would think that everybody would cooperate. Just in closing, I really wanna say is, I don't, I don't have an apology to, to any of you of what I said this today. I don't, I want you to know that what this has done to my family is, is damaging. It is completely damaging. And I just celebrated what would have been Madison's twentieth birthday four days ago. And it's so hard to this day to see Craig, Buck, Steve without wanting to completely break down. Because they're the only people here that understand what I'm going through, they're the only people that will listen to me. And I just expect that from all of you as well. Thanks.
Board members, if you have any questions of our first three parents, this is a good opportunity to, to ask them. This is kind of the break between the first section and the second section of this. Board members, any questions?
The resolution as it was written after you've had a chance to do what we've done in the last couple of months since it was presented, would you add any changes to it? Or will you be sharing that?
Yeah, so that'll be part of what I go into, will be a, a lot of the recommendations, et cetera.
Other, other questions? Board members? Mr. St. Juliana?
So, I'm going to focus first on the failures that happened leading up to and including the day of the shooting by the school system. Most of that is gonna come from the Guidepost Report. Following that, I'm, I'm gonna talk about some of the bigger picture systemic issues. And then I'm gonna go into some of our recommendations, if you will. I'm gonna put this up so you can see all of the citations. Okay, so the following is a list of just some of the many failures and acts of negligence that resulted in the avoidable tragic shooting at Oxford High School on November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. The shooting resulted in the deaths of Hannah St. Juliana, Tate Mir, Madison Baldwin, and Justin Schilling, and the wounding of several others. This is not meant to be a complete and detailed analysis, but rather just a high-level attempt to show you the true scope of the gross negligence that occurred surrounding the events leading up, up to and including the day of the shooting. I've also included a summary of our call to action for the four families, highlighting several actions we feel are urgently needed in order to protect the children of the state of Michigan. Because you need to understand our children are gone. We're not here for them so much as we're here for everybody else. We don't want this to happen again. Oxford School Administration staff acts of negligence. It was not just the actions of the school on the day of the shooting that were negligent. In the days, weeks, and months leading up to the shooting, there were numerous negligent actions taken by the administration. Leading up to the shooting, the administration ignored and downplayed email warnings from the Michigan State Police and Department of Homeland Security talking about the need to be on heightened awareness for potential acts of violence. They downplayed and ignored threats on social media, threats and incidents at the school. The administration misrepresented suppressed information. They misrepresented the deer head incident as a non-credible threat. They misrepresented the bird head incident as a non-credible threat, without even knowing who perpetrated the act. So, to understand this, they sent out a message to all of the students, all of the parents in the community and said, "It's a non-credible threat." They had no idea. Right? It turns out the perpetrator of that act later killed our children. They suppressed students, faculty, and parents from discussing the incidents. The principal went on the PA and told the students to stop talking about it. Stop talking about it, that was their solution. And you're gonna find that theme throughout this from the Oxford school system. Just don't talk about it. Along with that, they assured them they were safe, all of things were just rumors, non-credible threats, everybody's A-OK. You had parents calling the school concerned about all of these incidents going on leading up to them. I know of one parent who called the school comparing it to what happened at Columbine and the atmosphere before then. And she was basically told, "Oh, don't worry about it. My kids go here, if there was something to it, you know, we would do something." The day of the shooting, most of these come from conclusions out of the Guidepost Report directly. And just to highlight, Guidepost Solutions is an independent third party who conducted an in-depth investigation of the events leading up to and including the shooting. However, they focused only on the shooting as it directly related to the school. And they did not evaluate anything outside of that limited box such as the emergency response, things like that. The Oxford School Board did not require the administration and staff to cooperate with the investigation. In fact, their counsel actively worked to influence teachers and the MEA to not support the investigation. Even with these obstacles placed in its path, Guidepost clearly concluded that the Board of Education, the administration, and members of the staff were grossly negligent across the board. So Hopkins was the counselor and EJAC was the dean of students. The actions that Hopkins and EJAC took and the decisions that they made reflect the systemic failures of the district and the OHS leaders to implement the formal threat assessment policy at OHS and to properly train OHS staff on the policy. These systemic failures directly led to Hopkins and EJAC making crucial mistakes when evaluating disturbing statements and drawings on the shooter's math assignment and the information that Hopkins knew about the shooter from the previous day and earlier reports from one of the shooter's teachers. Hopkins and EJAC had sufficient information about the shooter to initiate a threat assessment, but failed to do so. They should have initiated the threat assessment procedure with the shooter remaining out of class until the assessment was complete. The shooter should have been sent home until the assessment was complete, but if the school decided to let him stay, as they did, then the shooter and his bag should have been searched. The school had reasonable suspicion to justify a search of the shooter's backpack, which contained his guns and bullets, but did not search the backpack. Hopkins and EJAC never should have allowed the shooter to return in the classroom after they reviewed the concerning drawings and troubling statements on the math, math assignment. This conclusion is not based on hindsight, but instead on the application of OHS's suicide prevention protocol that they also did not follow. Hopkins believed the shooter was a threat to himself despite the shooter's denial. EJAC admitted to the police that he and Hopkins believed it was not safe to send the shooter back to class. But they did so anyway, after giving the shooter his unsearched backpack holding the gun and ammunition. Guidepost found that the training of OHS faculty, staff, and students on threat assessments was deficient. On the day of the shooting, EJAC and Hopkins knew that the shooter's drawings and writings on his schoolwork that day suggested not suicide, but homicide. If you look at the drawing, the body leaking blood had multiple bullet wounds in them. It's, you know, I'm not an expert on suicide, but usually you don't shoot yourself multiple times when you're thinking suicide. The Guidepost investigation concluded, "It is not a close call. The shooter's concerning behaviors and statements, at the very least, might suggest physical violence or a threatening situation." With all this information, EJAC and Hopkins had the last best chance for, for the shooting to have been averted, but they decided to allow the shooter to return to class. Hopkins contributed directly to the tragic shooting on the afternoon of November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Hopkins failed to adhere to the ASCA ethical standards for school counselors. A dash, eight point nine. A dash eight point nine. Response and aftermath, the administration. The attitude and approach of the school administration after the shooting revolved around downplaying and delaying. It was a consistent theme. The administration repeatedly rebuffed efforts to create a temporary memorial, claiming it was triggering. It took months and months of back and forth and pushing until they finally relented and created a temporary memorial off near the auditorium where students don't have daily access. Little eight by ten photograph pushed off to the side. They forced students back into the same classrooms and hallways within two months of the shooting, despite precedent set and expert advice to the contrary. They forced out the recovery coordinator that was actually helping the students and the families. Probably the single, huh, the single person at that school that the families had any faith in and any trust with was forced out.
That's why. She wanted to help us.
The Oxford Board of Education Acts of Negligence. Policies and procedures. The B O E failed to hold superintendent Thron accountable to his roles, responsibilities, and performance standards. He had glowing reviews with no supportive data for the previous four years. It maxed out his reviews. The B O E failed to ensure policy and procedures were implemented regarding the E O P and the threat assessment policies. They failed to ensure that the threat assessment guidelines were created, failed to ensure the suicide prevention guidelines met the current best practices, failed to ensure the administration was aware of all threat policy and procedures, failed to ensure proper training for the E O P and threat assessment guidelines. Trainings that did exist for threat assessment procedures were deficient. The school board knew prior to November thirtieth that the school district was not following the E O P and the threat assessment policy. In fact, it was reported out by Jill Lamond both in June and November Board of Education meetings. So, two weeks before the shootings, Lamond came in front of the board and said, oh yeah, we didn't, we didn't have our review of the E O P once again, so we'll probably come back next month. Knowing that they wouldn't have time to complete the process and meet the law. So the process was supposed to, reviews were supposed to be completed by the end of twenty twenty one and submitted to the state. There's still, as a side note, nothing documented in any meeting minutes from the board, anything until March of the following year where they finally had the E O P review on March twenty third. I'm sorry, on February twenty third, they had to review. They reported it out to the Board of Education in mid-March. Response and aftermath. Despite knowing that policy and procedure were not followed by the school administration, no action was taken against the administration. Instead, they promoted two key individuals who failed in their duty and moved Hopkins and E Jack to roles with higher-risk students. Just pause and think about that. Not only was there not a single case of discipline against anybody in that school, they promoted two of the people. The two key players that the Guidepost clearly said were grossly negligent across the board, they moved to deal with the higher-risk students. How does that make any sense? The B O E has failed to uphold its own resolution to conduct an investigation, holding to accountability and transparency. So immediately after the shooting, they did their own resolution, said they were gonna fully investigate this, they were gonna be transparent, accountable regardless of the findings, and they all signed it. Guess what? Hasn't happened. In fact, just the opposite. After that, they delayed the investigation months. They used the excuse for a long time that they needed to wait until the criminal investigation was over. The prosecutor herself notified them through their attorneys that that was not the case. Several board members claim that the attorney, attorneys who work for the insurance company failed to pass that along to the board. Further delaying. The board, you can see by their actions, I believe it was May fifth of twenty-two, forgive me, my, my years are messed up here, but Board President Donnelly read a prepared statement basically parroting that. It was shortly after that when the parents in the community were holding up copies of the emails from the prosecutor, clearly saying that that was all false, that they started to change their tune.
Insurance company pulling the puppet strings behind the scenes. Money and power before kids' safety.
Yes. So the board failed to abide by the results of the investigation, taking no responsibility. They then misled the community by holding listening sessions and once not, once again, not following the community requests. They promised in these sessions to take down everything, answer every single question that came from the parents in the community. They failed to do that. Their rationale was, well, they, they grouped questions together and had general answers and things like that, thereby sidestepping, having to directly answer a lot of the, the issues and questions. They declined the A G offers to do independent investigation. And by the way, that apparently was done in secret because it's now we're in any of the board meeting minutes. Two remaining members from the time of the shooting still to this day refuse to resign. So I'm gonna shift gears a little bit and talk about conflict of interests. So, as we've had to do a lot of research and things come up, one of the things that I found previous to one of our meetings with the governor, I was just doing some light research on the internet and I started finding all of these links. They're highly disturbing. So just to give you a high-level snapshot of some of these relationships, and by no means, I'm not implying that these are all nefarious. Some of them are highly disturbing. Some of them are just a result of the way we do business. But, once you start looking at it, you need to start asking some questions.
And these complex of interests, that's you gotta ask.
So there's complex interconnections between these individuals and entities, namely the insurance company, the security company, the Board of Education, Michigan Legislature, the Michigan State Board of Education, et cetera. Some of these are severe conflicts of interest that exist between protecting the students and protecting the insurance company. For example, S E C was the initial, gave the initial investigation. So, some of you probably recognize S E C. I think they're cha- they changed their name down to Secure Environment Consultants. So they were hired by the insurance company to do an initial investigation right after the shooting. They misrepresented the truth by claiming that there were no issues with the school threat assessment procedure. You can go in and look still at their presentation and they give basically a thumbs up on procedures. Guideposts later went through and they revealed that the procedure had never been followed. There is not a single case of the procedure ever being documented and followed. The president of S E C is on the School Safety and Health Commission. SETSEG lawyers tried to intimidate teachers from cooperating with Guidepost's investigation and directly advised critical witnesses not to cooperate. The S R O, who was out of the building during the shooting, was layered, later hired by S E C. Invoices were paid to the president of S S S E C as an individual versus S E C for the, for the initial vulnerability assessment and report that we just discussed. The district hired James Vernier from S E C as the new director of safety. So, I don't know if you can see this easily here on the big screen. So, I laid this out and how did this came with just a half an hour of searching the web and interconnections. So, at the center of this is SETSEG, the insurance company. They are deeply tied to S E C, the Security and Environment Consultants. They have multiple cross-postings on all of their social media. The same schools that SETSEG represent are represented by S E C. And I think if you were to ask certain members of the Oxford Board about discussions that they had from S E C, after that, they found out that their initial report was lacking. That basically, they highlighted to the board that they worked for the insurance company, not the school board. I'm not gonna go through all of this here, but you can see the same type of relationship between the insurance company and the law firm. You have Marco Mullins and Horton. One of those lawyers from that firm sit on the board of SETSEG. S E C, if you follow through S E C, you'd have Jason Russell, the president, who sits on the School Safety and Mental Health Commission. All of these, they all point to each other. Like I said, the ones of biggest concern is with, with this, with SETSEG, the insurance company that's basically overseen by superintendents from the schools. Who actively try to delay influence the M E A, influence teachers from cooperating with the investigation. Obviously because they're worried about money. They're not worried about the students, they're worried about money. So here you can see from SETSEG, so one of the directors is from the Michigan, Michigan Association of School Board members. You can see examples here of the cross-postings between SETSEG and S E C and the M A S A. And these, like I said, these are just one example. I mean, if you go, uh, there, there's, there's an incredible amount, especially between SETSEG and S E C. So SETSEG representing eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and forty Michigan public school students. So what makes you think that when this happens again, not if, it's, it's when this happens again, that anything's gonna be different? It's the same insurance company using the same lawyers with all of the same connections protected by government. So you can see here SETSEG on the different pieces of it. This is one of the lawyers from the law firm. You have all of the different superintendents from across the state, representatives from all of these educational associations. You can see S E C list of, there's twelve pages of listing up all of their s- school and clients. You could see Oxford is highlighted there. You can also see two of their other major clients, SETSEG, Michigan State Senate. To me, it's all a bit disturbing. Yeah.
You said Hitchcock was, it looks like you circled him, he's on a board and he was one of the lawyers. Um, what board is he on?
So, Hitchc- uh.
And then I also noticed Tim Mullins connected to the N E A and the other lawyer.
Yeah, so Hitchcock is, is part of the, the firm that represents SETSEG. And he, he sits on the board of SETSEG.
And Tim Mullins. And Tim Mullins sits on, and Michigan Education Association?
No, um, that connection was, that connection was drawn from, um, to highlight his, his role in, he approached the local union head and had discussions with NEA, trying to influence and intimidate them uh, to communicate to their members not to cooperate with the investigation. And that's all documented.
Sorry. So much for the anti-bullying campaigns that the schools push, because behind the scenes, teachers are getting bullied.
Alright, government immunity. Government immunity for schools is blocking the ability to clearly identify problems, and is blocking accountability. It's blocking the ability to drive necessary change. In order to have real change, there needs to be accountability. This is currently lacking at Oxford schools. Government immunity has directly led to the state taking zero action to address the failures of the school district or the emergency response. The immunity means no investigation, no accountability, and no change. It's led to responsibility being taken by no one. Awareness, it's, it's buried awareness across the strait, the state. And it's allowed in, individuals involved in this to move on to other communities and other school systems with no awareness. So, for example, two of the main players have moved on to different school systems, including Bay City and Grand Rapids. Some of the people have moved on to work for SEC. Others have moved on to work for the security system companies that have been, that were purchased for Oxford afterwards, and now, they now go work for them.
It catapulted a lot of careers, this shooting has.
If you cannot admit a mistake, you can't fix it. There are many aspects of accountability involved here, however, some of the key items are. So, the shooter and the parents are being addressed by the system. The school district is the remaining key piece, and it still has a toxic culture. To this day, they have not acknowledged any wrongdoing. So, I just got done listing, I don't know what, five pages of conclusions of mistakes that were made. Oxford's admitted to nothing. Not a single case of discipline has resulted from these mistakes. I mentioned they forced out the recovery coordinator, the only one that we actually trusted at the school. Many of the same administration still remain. And I just mentioned about some of those directly involved have now quietly moved to other schools throughout the state. Alright, so, our call to action. Before I dive into this, we're not experts. We don't claim to be experts. But I'm gonna go over some obvious things that we are, we are calling for. The first of them being, let me put backup here. So, gun violence is the number one killer of our children today. That's a fact. As such, we need to take immediate and drastic measures to address this. So, one of the first things that we've asked, and we've been in discussions with the governor about this, was to create a state-level task force or a commission to investigate all aspects of the Oxford incident. Because we don't wanna make knee-jerk reactions. We want this based off of data. But if you can't look at it, investigate it, talk about it, analyze it, you can't come up with a solution. So the first thing we've asked is the creation of this commission to investigate. Include the events leading up to the shooting, the shooting, and the response by the school, the emergency responders, community, both the immediate and longer term. We're saying build on the Guideposts report. It was narrow and focused and limited in cooperation, but even then, it, it was solid work. Build on that. Build on the Oakland County Commission on Gun Violence. Some really good work was done by that commission after the shooting. Identify and drive the necessary legislative changes based on the data, based on what you find. Leverage this opportunity to capture lessons learned for both the state and the nation. There's an opportunity here to do the deep dive, learn what mistakes were made and why, and how to fix them. Second, we ask for consideration of creating a state agency focused on firearm violence prevention, intervention, and accountability. A possible model is the agency that was recently created by Maryland. We need a single point source to consolidate the myriad policies, procedures, agencies, and legislation. Not only on looking at the upstream piece of it and consolidating all of this and enforcing, but also in the response to have a single agency that can lead the response to the school shootings. Legislation. So, as I said, we need a complete investigation in order to have the firm data to create the countermeasures necessary before good legislation can really be proposed. There are, however, several immediate and obvious pieces of legislation to start with. The first is to amend government immunity. Now, it would be awesome to say, get rid of it. That's never gonna happen. But what can happen, and has happened in other states, is it was amended, similar to what Colorado has done with the Claire Davis School Safety Act, where it makes exceptions for cases of school violence. Mandate threat assessment for all school EOPs across the state. Along with that, well, I'll get to that in a second, um, revoke some of the FOIA protection for key points of the EOP. Mandate independent investigations after school shootings with compulsory participation by school officials, administration, and staff. So, to go with the, back to that, so Oxford has consistently said as an excuse, while they can't compel their teachers to cooperate with the investigation, but their own policy on work safety says that teachers and staff are required to participate in investigations dealing with work safety. I think this qualifies. And yet, they continue to use that as an excuse of why they didn't force people to cooperate. Hopkins, Hopkins never gave his testimonies to his, or interviewed with Guideposts, he refused, and the school did nothing about it. The key player arguably, prohibit insurance companies and their lawyers from interfering in investigations. SEC brags that they were on site within thirty minutes, being hired by SETSEG and, and their lawyers after the incident. Thirty minutes to manage the crisis. The school within ten minutes, actually, I think it was twelve minutes, had sent out emails to the administration to not discuss and not answer any questions. Implement wellbeing surveys for student health. Establish funding for peer mentoring programs. Amend existing legislation to add penalties for failure to comply. Right now, most of the laws out there, including the EOP, they simply lack teeth. There's no penalties. And hence, the schools aren't worried about not complying. We call on the members of the State Board of Education to use your influence to promote the identified legislation, to hold Oxford schools accountable, and to help request the AG to investigate Oxford schools. We've provided separately numerous examples of possible financial malfeasance, misrep, misrepresenting student counts, violating Open Meetings Act. These are all things that have been provided as examples. Conclusion. It's been two and a half years since the shooting. There is absolutely nothing about the Oxford shooting that is easy. There is no easy way to discuss it, address it, nor fix it. This does not, however, excuse the lack of discussion, nor especially the lack of accountability and responsibility. School shootings will continue. It's abundantly clear that the system is not protecting our children. You cannot continue to accept the status quo. The members of this board have a responsibility to take action. In conclusion, I wanna highlight the following. Recap of some of the items. An independent investigation filed on the Oxford School District Administration and Board of Education to have repeatedly been grossly negligent in both their actions and inactions. Oxford schools have admitted to no wrongdoing, taken no accountability, and have taken no internal acts of discipline. In fact, they've promoted key administrators. The state government, including this board, has taken no action to investigate or address the shooting. We're calling on all of you to put aside party affiliation and step forward to push for the required actions necessary to make our children safe. Because remember, it's not a matter of if this happens again, but rather when it happens again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are your, uh, are your notes slides available for us?
Yeah, I can, I can provide them, yes.
We would appreciate it, thank you so much.
I wanna add one thing to Steve. There was one leakage thing that I failed to, to put here when I talked about the leakage of the math assignment. He was caught searching bullets on his phone, caught watching violent videos on his phone, and the bird had made you, I, I mean, that is huge leakage. Now, one would ask, well, how do we know he did it? There's cameras everywhere in the school. Yeah, you get on that camera, that's right outside that door of that bathroom, and then you ask the question to every boy that walked in the bathroom that day, and you find out who did the bird, who did the bird had incident. More leakage.
Um, let's, uh, let's go to board for questions. Ms. Dilly?
First, I wanna thank you guys for coming and, uh, sharing your stories and giving the thorough presentation. It's very, uh, helpful. I know you stated about you would like for us to ask the AG to do an investigation, but you mentioned that the AG was involved. What, what involvement did the AG's office have already?
So the AG offered three times to the board to come in and, and do an investigation. And they declined all three times. But, interestingly enough, their lawyer Mullins testified, I shouldn't say testified, he, he stated before the Board of Education meeting on February twenty-second of twenty-two that the AG had the power to come in at any time if she thought any piece of the investigation was lacking. So you have, on one hand, the board declining the offer, the AG not pushing, and just doing it. And at the same time, you had the, the lawyers there saying that, yeah, no, the AG has the power to come in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dilly. Other board members? Please, Mr. President.
There's a lot here, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna focus on one, one part that, um, the information that you brought to the table here today changes, um, things. Is kind of an addition to other things that we have talked about at our board table, um, in the last couple of years, actually, post Parkland shooting. So, I, I wrote down one of the first questions I wanted to ask you, and you already answered it. Is Hopkins still employed? This is the school counselor, correct?
He is.
Okay. And he was promoted?
Hopkins was not promoted. Hopkins was moved to work with, um, arguably, uh, higher-risk students afterwards.
Okay. I would agree with you, it's a key, he's a key player.
Yeah.
Um, I, I've shared, I mean, my board members know, I'm a nurse, I've shared with you guys a little bit that there are a number of clinical rating scales that relate to how you would assess someone who is, um, suicidal, whether or not they are a risk to themselves or to others. And Buck, what you've shared, it was off the charts. So if, if the parents of the shooter had brought him into the hospital, and I was the one assessing him, he would be committed. That the emergency response that happens in a different setting, so we're talking about hospitals or outpatient care versus schools. And so what we see is this cross-section now with what it looks like to bring in healthcare in schools. And I think that what comes to surface with what you have shared here today is that the culture of schools is not amendable to that care, unless those providers can actually provide the care that they would have provided in another setting, and that is consistent with the standards of care as a mental health provider. So, when we sit here and say it's not acceptable, and there needs to be accountability, that's a hundred percent accurate, and it, and it almost instantaneously falls at the feet of Hopkins. Not that everything else doesn't need to be addressed, I'm not suggesting that government immunity isn't the number one thing here, but ultimately, if Hopkins was operating in a hospital, and his lack of assessment skills and follow-through had led to a death, the hospital culture is very different in accountability. You lose your job. You lose your job.
Yeah, I, I, I think you could make the argument right now that private schools in Michigan are safer than public schools.
And that that's.
Simply because they can be held accountable.
Yep, public education culture right now is so lacking in accountability that, and this is a perfect example of what that contrast is. Because if it was Hopkins in a hospital, he'd have lost his job. You look at other scenarios with this, like I went to work every day fearing, making sure that my decisions were the right decisions based on my assessments, right? If I pass a med that kills a patient, I not only lose my job, I'm personally in court. I lose my certification and my registration, and I don't ever practice as a nurse again, and I'm lucky if I don't go to prison. So you look at the fact that he hasn't lost his job, that we haven't revealed, you know, even more information that you guys should have in terms of the why. And the fact that government immunity is at the center of it, but for specific sects of our society. Because it's not, it does, it's not present in other industries like you've shared. It's not present in healthcare, liability is very real and alive in healthcare. So emergency response is such at the center of, of the death of your children. Because if this person was held accountable, it would have made all of the difference. So having access to those EOPs, having access to what the emergency response requirements are, what assessment tools are used by school counselors. What the expected outcomes are to make sure that everybody is safe. It's just, it's really just so key because had you used any one of the tools. Had Hopkins used any one of the tools that are available to everybody else in the mental health care field, and according to mental health care standards, they would be here today.
Yeah, so all, all of those players, Hopkins. Throne, who was the superintendent, Weaver, Lamond, they all pointed to the other persons having the responsibility for the EOP. And threat assessment policies, so they, all of them pointed to other people. So they, they couldn't even internally determine.
Who owned it.
Who owned it.
May I suggest to, and, and again, this is just ideas for exploration. Is it possible that Hopkins in the public education culture, you know, loses that above all else, do no harm and accountability to. The tools that he's expected to use and the outcome within the policies that exist in public education? This is why it's so sad to see that he didn't participate in the investigation, because the questions I would ask that man if I was sitting in front of him is. I know, you and I both know, Mr. Hopkins, that if you were in a hospital, this would not have happened. Like, not that mistakes don't happen in hospitals, but when they do, ownership is very clear. It's not a confusing outcome that we can't figure out. So I just wonder if he would be helpful if the AG really does choose to investigate in understanding public, public education culture and lack of accountability.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Tilly.
Thank you, thank you all for coming here today, for sharing and for the presentation. You mentioned a recovery coordinator and indicated that that individual had been forced out. Do you know how long that coordinator was there, a couple of months?
Was that like a year and a half, two years?
Yeah, about, about two years, I think.
And was that individual brought in fairly quickly after the tragedy or?
Probably what, within three months, probably, three, four months?
Yeah, something like that.
I think once everybody went back to school and she was already there. And, and she was at the high school?
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Um, I have a lot of things floating around in my head.
Write them down, spit them out.
You know, I, I think we, we are all in agreement that there is a mental health crisis in this state and that. That we need more social workers and counselors in all of our schools.
No, we don't.
You don't think we need?
No, no, I think if we put in a systemic, a systematic way to value kids' well-being. Techy, we can go make interventions personal. So we already have a shortage on counselors and social workers.
That's what I was gonna say.
Where are they gonna come from? So we gotta get more efficient with how we're monitoring the students' well-being, the student body's well-being. So we gotta start using all this data that we're collecting. And there's already software monitoring systems out there, put them all in a, in a, put all this data in a bucket. She could watch it on a dashboard and see, we do it with forty-two strong, we have our kids fill out well-being surveys. And when, 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 when we see consistent drops, we reach out to the team leader, we don't tell the team leader anything, hey, Johnny's scoring low. Go check on Johnny, do a well-being check-in. Check on Johnny, Johnny's scores come back up, before Johnny even gets in the crisis, Johnny's not feeling good, his scores show it. So we, we make an intervention, and now all of a sudden, he gets a few things off his chest, he's feeling better, he doesn't have to go to mom and dad. Right, because he doesn't want to embarrass mom and dad or let mom and dad down, and he's got a support system there. The schools could do the same thing. We don't need to hire more counselors, I don't, I, I don't believe in that.
A key example that sportsman Buck was saying was, he mentioned the SABR exam.
Oh, the SABR assessment?
The SABR assessment, which was a flaming red flag that the individual was an issue. The bigger issue was the school had the data, but they never actually looked at it.
So.
Sorry to cut you off by that.
No, no, you're fine.
I'm passionate about that.
You're absolutely fine, and I, and I'm glad you, you made that suggestion. The, the issue is, we're in a local control state, we can't make every district do that. And it, it may be a possibility to offer that to districts, but we can't make them do it. Even when we, like the MiFi data, a lot of the data comes from the MiFi collection of the data. Districts opt in to do MiFi, some districts don't do it, some districts do, but we can't make them do it.
Well, but you guys have a lot of the power to make them do it indirectly, because all the, all the schools, it boils down to money. Right, so you give them the, the choice of, they use these systems in order to qualify for the monies. That's how you indirectly.
The state legislature could do that, we can't.
Yes, but, but you can work with them to propose that legislation to them, yeah.
Yeah, there's no question.
No, I, I, we're, we're still with you.
Yeah, okay. The school district, can we invite them to the state board table so that we can get a presentation from them and ask questions as well?
We could certainly invite them, whether, whether members from the school district want to attend is a different question, but we could invite them, yes. Other questions?
That's it for, for right now, thank you.
Thank you, other, other questions?
Some thoughts and questions, if I can just, just really just ask some questions, I think that that is what we're here for. And first, let me thank you all for coming, and I think during our last meeting or the previous meeting. We really had a lot of questions, and there have been meetings before that that we've had questions. And so for you all to be able to come here today and be willing to come here, and we did not want to make knee-jerk reactions either. So this is a wealth of information, obviously, the report is good information. I think some of the other ways that, that you all are suggesting that we get additional information would be helpful and useful as well. Because we know and, and appreciate you all for saying, for thinking about children and families that are out there and that we want to protect. As a person who has dedicated my adult life to prevention, advocating for prevention. Advocating or working in crisis, the things that you all have brought up make perfect sense. And just, just some thoughts, when we look at the report, listening to your information and what you've brought to us. I will not deny that the systems failed your children. And these are failures that we've been trying to address for a very long time. And again, a lot of us through preventative measures. And as I read the report and I've heard the stories, looking at the educators that were there in the building and having that contact with family. At a time when there has been the large calls for parents to be able to have so much input on what's going on in the schools and in their children's lives, rightfully so. Would like to get your thoughts on that as far as the educators trying to balance their professional. Their professional thoughts and guidance and thought, that they would have given with that of the parents. We're in a space where there have been those who have just not been in favor of social and emotional supports in schools. We've talked about some of the data that we know we, we want to have collected, and we've had to argue about data being able to be collected. Because there are those who don't want this type of data to be available. And then my other question, as we talk about fortifying this system. And making sure that it is right to protect our children in these spaces, our schools. How do we make sure that there are those to assess and administer some of these screenings and the tools that, that we're talking about? And I'll just, those are just some initial questions that I, that I have.
Well, I think, just gonna back up on, on one of them. You talked about the balance between the school and the parents. I think one of the reasons, or one of the things that influenced this was the fact that. Hopkins was afraid. He, he didn't stand up to the parents. Um, I mean, it was. It is a, a, a general theme in some ways where, in some ways, the school is so afraid of upsetting the parents in certain things. And in other ones, they just totally disregard them. So that's something that the school system needs to find a better balance between. Um, when it comes like for the teachers, their, I, I mean, I'll say personally, I think. The teachers did everything right. They raised the red flag to the administration repeatedly. They, you know, they, they walked the information down to the front office, because they didn't, they didn't want it to get lost in an email. You know, so the, the teachers, they did everything right as far as I'm concerned, up until the point when it came for them to speak up. Then they lost my respect. Only one-third of the teachers cooperated with the guidepost. And, and they were just trying to answer questions like, given where you were in the building, could you hear the Alice announcement? Things like that. Um, and because the board hid behind, oh, we can't make them cooperate, which is, like I said, false by their own policy. They haven't stood up. And to me. That's been one of the biggest disappointments for me personally in, in, in this response. I cannot understand how these educators will not step up and speak. I hear, keep hearing stories and talking to individuals that are teachers, et cetera, and how they're scared. That they're bullied at work, they're afraid of repercussions. But come on, these are our kids' lives we're talking about. So I'm sorry, I, I have no sympathy for that argument, none. Step up and say something.
So I want to hit on something here real quick about the school and the parents, you know, there's a trust issue there, right? This is why, right, because we have to come here and ask for your influence for change at the state level. This is why there's no trust. Because the school doesn't want to be accountable, our government doesn't want to be accountable for anything. We, this whole data thing, that's just an opportunity to divide us. If there was trust, if there was trust with our government. But our leaders don't show that, they want to argue with each other. We should be able to collect all the data we want and be able to make informed decisions, private decisions. To keep the student body safe and the staff. We do it at forty-two strong, we don't get every, I have to, I'm gonna go back, when I go back today, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check. But one hundred percent of our members last year participated in the well-being survey, the parents signed off on it, one hundred percent of them. Why? They trust us. And I guarantee you, we got far rights and far lefts in our program, but they support what we're doing and they trust us. That's a big hurdle that we, the people have with our government is we don't trust them. You know, so I think that's a big issue on that data thing. So the, the leaders want to fight about that. And then we fight about it, and I can't wait till they have a frickin' conversation, man, let's have a tough conversation.
As a related example, mentioned in here about, there was a lot of activity in social media prior to the shooting. Threats, warnings, countdowns. All of which the school said were non-credible, et cetera. So. Program that I know, I've heard you as a board talk about and support, Okay to Say. So we requested to the Michigan State Police, Okay to Say, to say, you know. Give us a copy of the, the Okay to Say incident reports. Leading up in the month prior. What, what was being said, et cetera. It was declined, said, oh, they're, they can't, they can't do that, it's beyond their system, they just stonewalled us. Eventually, I filed a suit against the Michigan State Police to try and get them to turn that over. In the meantime, Guidepost. Received ninety pages. From Okay to Say, ninety pages. That according to Guidepost were so heavily redacted that it was totally useless. So we're trying to get this information to see what's going on, what are some of the signs that led up to it. Our state government is hiding. Ninety pages, people. By the way, the, the suit was just dismissed because we were told we didn't ask for it in time. Do you remember the discussion about Setseg and the lawyers delaying the investigation, delaying the questions being asked? This is one of the results. So we still have no idea what's in those ninety pages in Okay to Say.
More reason why there's not trust between the people and the government. More reason why there's not trust between the people and the government, right? One thing I wanted to hit on with the whole delaying thing, so, um, as you, if you guys are keeping abreast of what's going on here, the state civil suit has been thrown out, right? So guess what appeared? And less than a week after that case was dismissed, the Saber Assessment is all of a sudden there for, there for viewing, it's now evidence. But it, but the timing of it coming out is very ironic. It's a cover-up, everything's a cover-up. Nobody wants to, nobody are put, nobody in our state is putting the kids first, say, all right, let's get to the bottom of what happened. We have to learn from this. Nobody's interested. Not one person is interested.
If there was a mandated investigation, we wouldn't have any questions to to ask about this, it would already be in the works. And it would be a a government entity supported law enforcement, however it's manned or staffed. And it would be at their hands and it would be their responsibility to do the entire investigation.
Put your simpleton hat on, just for one second, when I, when I think about this, what we're, you know, what we went through with dealing with this shooting and that and and also what we're currently dealing with, me personally at home with my wife. And I and I think about, I'm drinking, drinking through a fire hole, since I'm taking in all this information. And and it gets overwhelming to me sometimes and, you know, I kind of just get a little stressed out. But at night, when I lay in bed, I try to put my simpleton hat on and say, all right, put my simpleton hat on here and just kind of think about this, right? And think about it logically. And when I, when I think about this shooting, I just try to think about it very, very logically, like, there were four kids murdered. And our state hasn't investigated it, think about that. Just, I mean, just think about it just logically. There were four kids murdered. And our state's like, no, we're not, we're not gonna investigate that. How crazy is that? If you think about it, put your simpleton hat on. It's nuts.
Board members, another question?
Oh, I don't really have a question. So for me, my only, I was in the Senate when this happened, so Murray Costa, Senator Baer. And so support for that, but my only knowledge of what happened is through the media and news. So it wasn't until, I believe, last month, when someone said, read the Guidepost reports, and started reading into that, knowing that we were gonna see you guys. So learning and hearing today's presentation from you, like, I agree, and one of my things is behavioral health. Been doing this for thirty-some years, uh, juvenile justice, behavioral health, kids, all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to say I admire or commend your strength and diplomacy this with your frustration and grief and anger and sadness. And your presentation today, just, you know, it touched me in a different way. So, uh, as where we can, I believe we can support where we can. Some things aren't in our purview. There are gonna be other sides to some of this stuff, you know, no, you know, as you present, someone else will present. You know, in somewhere along the line, there'll be some reality, hopefully.
If you have a side, it's the insurance company is the problem.
You know, um, I can't imagine. I can, I can have some feelings and, but I can't imagine, like, any, you're probably all going through four different emotions. And so I don't pretend to be that, but I just appreciate it how you're still fighting for the justice for the children. It's the whole state at this point, but your focus is where it happened, I I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Um, like, Senator Pollock, I can't thank you all enough for coming, um, for bearing through these questions and again and again and again, having to tell this story to get your questions answered. So I truly, truly appreciate you all being here and bearing with us. Um, and just so I am clear, um, so the investigation is the AG investigation that currently the board has said that the AG could could push forward. The AG is saying that the board needs to request it, so there needs to be clarity on that.
Yes, so, let me, let me clarify that a little bit.
Okay.
I think at this point, um, there's kind of two levels to that. So one is the level that we've asked originally the AG to come in and investigate the whole thing, and that was pushed off, pushed off. And then as we dug in and found a lot more indications, we've asked her to at least going and start there and see where it goes type of thing. But beyond, beyond that, and it could be led by her, we've now kind of elevated to the governor to form a task force to look not just at the school, but the whole response. Because we haven't, we didn't touch on it today, but, um, there were a lot of issues with the response. You know, questions of like, why was the Oxford EMTs not the first ones dispatched? They're like two minutes away. Why was my daughter left there over twenty minutes to bleed out to death? The the nine-one-one, um, dispatch, um, why was it, why did it take thirteen thirteen minutes before EMTs were dispatched? There's a lot there to learn what happened and correct it so it doesn't happen again. And that was going to only happen with this larger task force.
That that was gonna be my question, where, what is the response, uh, right now to the request for the commission or the the task force?
So we've been discussing it with the governor and her staff, um, and we're waiting for an answer.
Doctor, do you have any more?
Not right now.
Good, thank you.
So just a couple of, um, things about EOPs and then the task force. And so we actually had a two thousand eighteen safety task force in digging into the Guidepost and then other information around, um, the shooting. And in the safety task force for two thousand eighteen, it was recommended that there be a steering committee related to safety in schools. So, um, the people that serve as representation on that creating this steering committee is to assign responsibility to Michigan Department of Education to review and, um, update administrative rules related to school safety planning and exercising that can be approved for professional development. So I, you know, we've talked a lot about requiring BTM training and we've gone back and forth about it. I think that the safety task force, the steering committee, the federal law on EOPs and where we're at post-two thousand eighteen, um, there was a failure in implementing those recommendations from that safety task force. I think we need to admit that failure as a department because we can only move forward with what it looks like to actually provide professional development that's consistent with the EOPs and the EOP process that should have taken place in Oxford. That would include BTM training for every school employee, which I've kind of likened to CPR at the board table before. You don't walk into a hospital there, every single person is is trained in CPR, whether it's the clerk you register with, the tech that takes care of you, the nurse, the doctor, doesn't matter. So, I mean, it would be very helpful for, um, a state task committee at this point in time to unpack what we didn't implement with the two thousand eighteen one and how we need to move forward.
So this, part of this feeds into the second ask that we talked about to the governor was to consolidate all of these things under one agency, similar to what Maryland did. Um, and part of the goes with that is giving them the resources to enforce it, right? Because, um, right now, there's nobody checking, are these EOPs implemented, right? Um, you can make the case, well, you have my OSHA could be doing something to audit the schools to see, are they following the procedures? Whether it's them or somebody else, the the key issue is here is you're right, it's, it was, it's a failure in the system. And if it's consolidated under one agency that is looking at all aspects of this, all these different task forces and commissions that have been done in the past, and they were formed, but how many of them actually accomplish their goals? You know, I think some of those, we just had a discussion, um, some of those points from the safety commission that were back in two thousand and eighteen still haven't been completed. Right? It's six years later. So obviously with these, the commissions and task force, et cetera, there has to be one, one agency holding them accountable, here's that word again, with key metrics. I mean, you know, Buck mentioned it, if you go into private industry, this is how the world works. You have targets and goals and metrics that are measured to whether you're meeting them or not. And if you're not, you need to explain why and what do you need to accomplish the goal? And that's what's a big piece of what's missing in our state government.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I, you know, I feel like this is something that we gotta get right. You know, Tiffany mentioned it about the local control, whenever, when anybody says local control, it's like, well, we can't do anything. Yeah, we can, right? We can do something like that. Like, for instance, in the private world, if we want to continue to do business with the big boys, O A, big O E Ms, Ford, GM, Chrysler, Honda, you know, Toyota, all of them, we have to be ISO certified. So if we want to continue to have a supplier co with these folks, we gotta keep our ISO certification up and we get audited for that. We could do the same thing for the local control thing. These local, these these boards want to stay in the game, keep getting taxpayer money, they better do their job.
Ironically, ironically, one of the most potential, uh, proponents of being able to enforce that, if you got rid of the government immunity, would be the insurance companies.
Right.
Because they're then in their own best self-interest to make sure that their clients are following the procedures and the rules to protect themselves and their money. Right? Right now, that doesn't happen.
There's no incentive to do it.
So just, and I, I want to just piggyback onto what you guys are saying, back to having a statewide task force to work these, you know, nuanced issues out within everything. Because again, the eighteen task force actually assigned responsibility to the Michigan Department of Education for the planning thereof within school safety. We have an Office of School Safety, um, you've mentioned one of the persons that sits on that. And so the fact that it hasn't been done in six years, one of the things that comes to mind is, do we have a list of local school districts that have not updated their EOPs? Because the federal law states that they're supposed to be updated every two years. So has the Office of School Safety done that within the Michigan Department of Education?
We're gonna focus on our time here and we can unpack some of that later on, have you do that. But we only have our Oxford parents here for another twenty-six minutes. It's a legitimate question, we'll get you an answer.
Right.
Any other questions? No, if not, um, other board members, because I have a series, I want to understand better, but I want my board to have the opportunity for, can you go back to the, to the juxtaposition of your ask of the governor for a specific task force relative to the AG investigation? Is the la, is the, is the task force a substitute for the AG investigation?
I think it can be. I think one of the reasons we moved to that level honestly is simply because of the reluctance of the AG to take action. She, her position is that she can't force cooperation. So, you know, in in offering, offering to do the investigation rather than simply taking action and going in and making somebody stop her, basically, I mean, I I like use the analogy, it's like the beat cop walking down the street sees somebody breaking the storefront window and asks, uh, you know, should I take a look and see what's going on here? And they say, ah, no, keep walking, just keeps walking. That's in essence what she's done, right? She's offered to do an investigation, they've said, yeah, no, nothing to see here, keep walking. Um, so if she's unwilling to do it, fine, we're calling on the governor to create this task force, to bring this information out to light. Because it's the information that we're looking for in order to make the solutions, come up with the solutions.
The Guidepost report says, uh, several things. One, it says that it didn't get all the cooperation it would have wanted, that that it tried to fill in the gaps with, uh, depositions and the like, um, to which it was, um, which which it was able to garner from, uh, the prosecutor's office, from the sheriff's office and the like. So it did its best to cobble together the whole picture and felt that it did, under the circumstances, a pretty good job, given what the insurance company, uh, did, given what the school district did relative to urging people in their midst to keep their mouths shut. So, so the Guidepost said, you know, we did a pretty good job, all things considered. And Guidepost continued in its report to say, um, interestingly, that no state investigation would generate much additionally beyond what we did. But that's clearly not your reflection. Your reflection is that more is out there and more could be garnered by a state investigation. So just help me understand better, because I'm sympathetic to the idea of a state investigation. I agree a hundred percent with you. Four children died two and a half years ago, and we've not gotten full clarity on what took place that day. So what I'm trying to understand better is, given what Guidepost said in its pretty voluminous report, it's in excess of five hundred pages, and I heard what you said about the ninety, uh, pages of Okay to Say,
Yeah.
um, uh, threats that were reported, um, but but tell me what you think can be
So, so there's, there's two aspects of it, and Guidepost has said it themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the first being that there are still two-thirds of the teachers and administration there, including some of the key players, that they never heard from. They've got no information from directly. And that tied in with the fact that, um, the investigation from a criminal side was was never followed by the sheriff's department when it came to the school. Um, and that the trial for the shooter was never happened, basically, right? He pleaded guilty. So the trial that normally would have brought a lot more of this information out and asked pointed questions, it never happened. So you have that that aspect, uh, for the first part. And then the second part is, is Guidepost, and they've said the exact same thing, is they only looked at the school. They didn't look at the emergency response, n- none of that, um, that also needs to be examined. um to help prepare us for when it happens again.
Yeah, which was the re- the insurance company driving the response, right, out of the gate? And then, you know, I always think of it as, could lives have been saved? Like after the shooting started, what could we have done better after the shooting? Okay. Shooting happened, now how how, everything that we've been trained on, do we need to make any tweaks to that training? Could we have saved lives, right? And that won't be investigated, hasn't been investigated, and should be investigated. Like you could make an argument that two lives, two kids should be alive today out of the four. You can make an argument for that.
Based on the emergency response?
Yes. And I'm not saying, and here's the thing, I'm not, I'm I think it was something systemic, like I don't think it was the people. I think it was something systemic, like something in the process that failed. Why would we not wanna look at that? You know, and try to look at it like, hey, we could have saved lives. Like for instance, to give example, Tate Tate was shot before the Alice announcement. How is that possible? How is that possible? Right? So, you know, my first thought would be, alright, how what's a what's a way we can, we can kinda get that announcement quicker? Right? We have fire alarm, like years ago, remember we put in the fire alarm systems? Well, why don't we put in like an active shooter type system, the same type of gig, but it's blue instead of red, and they're all around the school? Right? And then wherever that one is pulled, it's probably close to where the shooter is, boom, you can locate where the shooter is ASAP. You know, I I I don't know, I I there's just.
There's there's a lot. I mean, there's over a hundred, over a hundred and some cameras in that school, but nobody was watching them.
There's a lot. Yeah. Right.
The the two SRO officers were out of the school.
Right.
And so by emergency response, you're talking about not only the response within the school, you're talking about the the response uh of the EMTs, but you're also talking about the alert lockdown, inform, counter evacuate, uh emergency response as well, within the school.
Yeah, 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 like the whole thing. Did they do everything per how they were trained? And if they didn't, why not? And if so, what could we learn? Could we get better at that training now? Right? But our system doesn't wanna look at that, because I think why our system doesn't wanna investigate it and look at it, because they're gonna see failures.
Well, that's the only way to improve.
It's the only way you can do it.
Yeah.
Um wellness surveys, so I I um I believe strongly in them. I think there's a real value associated with them. Would you make them mandatory?
No.
Okay, fair enough, but you would make them available throughout the state?
Yeah, I I I why not? Why wouldn't it be a a tool?
I agree, there's no doubt, there's thirty-four hundred schools, um there is a lot more uh children's mental health funding than there was two years ago, an enormous amount more, and local school districts can avail themselves of that. We need to press that as a legitimate uh opportunity for them. There are school districts that are doing wellness checks uh with their kids, on their kids, um there are others, not so much. There are some that believe that mental health is the province of parents, um is the province of the home, not the schools and school district.
Uneducated people, man, it's people that aren't looking at the research.
Mm-hmm.
Now pandemic's a huge reason. And what was the driver of the, I mean, what was the driver of the response to the pandemic? Our leadership, right? Our leadership drove the response and our leadership couldn't get together and have a conversation, so then it divided everybody. And isolated everybody, right? It was just I don't know, man, this stuff is so simple to me. It's just, there's, it's right there for the taking for us, for things to be better in our world. It's, and we just wanna play political games.
Would um Just to comment on our last short portion, whether wellness surveys are mandatory or not, you know, they're subjective and objective information and the concept of of assessment is still applicable, whether, you know, someone participates in the wellness assessment that we encourage them to participate in if that's the direction we go in. Um and then it's still incumbent upon us to act, right? So that's, you know, I think you keep pushing and encouraging the idea of wellness assessments in a culture that embraces them and completes them, but it's still the responsibility of leadership to assess uh the information that is subjective and to act accordingly.
So I wanna add something real quick. So when you asked me a question, would you make it mandatory, and I gave you an immediate answer, okay? Why can't we sit down and have a public conversation? Why can't our leaders sit down and have a public conversation about it and debate it? In front of the people and build the trust? You probably wouldn't, I bet you most people would participate, you wouldn't have to make it mandatory if the folks seen that our leaders want want to really look after the kids.
Well, there are local school districts that are in this space and we've promoted um not only more funding for children's mental health, but also the hiring of more helping professionals. Because I do believe that there's a value to more helping professionals in school. And while we don't have the requisite number, we've hired more than a thousand uh in the last three years. There are more than a thousand helping professionals that weren't there three years ago. So we've improved in that area, we're not where we need to be. And the reality is, one could argue, I would argue, we'll never have the requisite number of helping professionals. So we need to deputize some people who aren't social workers or school psychologists, guidance counselors or nurses to learn more about children's mental health and to be able to help kids to a greater degree, not because they they were trained to be social workers or school psychologists, but because they were trained to work in schools with children who are in some cases fragile.
Right.
So I think, you know, in a lot of ways, we're saying much the same thing. I think I probably lean a little bit more heavily on those who are who are trained in the the area, but the reality is, we're never gonna have the requisite number. And and we're going to, we're gonna have to make uh the training stronger for people who are educators, not necessarily helping professionals per se, helping in a different fashion.
Well, if you think about, ask the counselor how they build their caseload on a daily basis. And it's gonna be completely ad hoc. Well, I got this teacher bringing it to me as principal, right? It's, there's not a systematic way for them to get to the kids that need the help. So, you know, to me, I mean, it's, if you if you have this software monitoring system and you're inputting all this data, it's already data you're collecting, let's just take the well-being survey out of it. It's already data you're collecting that you can monitor kids' well-being. And now you can, maybe you can do the same, the job, like for instance Oxford, how many counselors does Oxford have? Four?
Four.
Four. And we got a student body of sixteen hundred, it's four hundred per counselor, right? Which I think puts us pretty close to dead last in the nation, pretty, pretty.
You talk about, you talk about as a state?
Correct, correct.
We are very close as a state to being last in the nation with respect to.
Correct, correct, right. So, so why are we dead last? I don't know, but we're dead last, so we gotta fix the problem. So how do we monitor more kids more efficiently? So in the private industry, we figure that out. Or we die, or or we go out of business, right? That, we have to figure that out in the private industry.
Kind of something that goes along with mine, but that is, um the Jewish Foundation, um we got together with some mental health professionals. Uh we um we put together a little presentation for the Michigan State Bowling Association, Coaches Association. Uh it was just an hour long presentation that we did, um just highlighting um many different avenues uh that coaches, assistant coaches and the parents that are all involved in that sport or in within their uh their school system, I all have we presented them with all phone numbers and um classes and and things that they can do and stuff that they can take on their own uh to to dislook out for this type of stuff, you know, we just um you know, bring up, highlight certain um aspects, certain uh behavioral tendencies um had in young uh young children just to be able to identify that and 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 take that mental notation away from it all. And it was a pretty successful, we had a a lot of, we've had a few confirmed um cases where uh you know, the information did get to the to the hands of somebody who needed help and it and it, you know, it's rewarding, you know, it's uh it felt good and if it worked at just on that small level with just that one small presentation, I mean, just having something on a steady basis um available to, you know, coaches, parents, um members of the community, um it can, makes this like an adult education almost, you know, just uh for it, just to kinda get that, get the information in the hands of people that are watching, that can see the stuff behind the scenes.
Thank you. Um to your recommendation about peer mentoring programs, strongly support it, without a doubt. Uh young people hear and see things in one another that adults aren't privy to. Um we we like to think we're really connected to our kids and in many cases we are. But in many cases, they're sharing with one another what they wouldn't necessarily share with their parents as they get, as they get older. And um to have kids locked in and and looking out for one another, I think is huge. I think that that's enormously important.
Powerful.
Yeah, there's there's no question about that. Um would you like to to share anything in conclusion?
No, I think I I think we've shared a lot today, obviously. Um unfortunately, it's still only the tip of the iceberg. I'm available anytime, if you have additional questions, just reach out to me. Um we uh, we're not going anywhere. Our voices will be here um until we're actually heard, so.
I agree. And so still are the voice of the higher support groups too. Uh there's a a whole community of parents out there that uh don't have the answers that that they need and um we have our advocates here that support us, have been doing a lot of research and um investigating the laws and and it's, we can, they brought a lot of valuable information to the presentation and um to to us in just in general.
Yes.
First please.
Um you were talking about a whole lot of parents out there and and I I can't stop but thinking of, you know, something, and we talk about it at this table, the in-school um shootings and deaths, but the those that happen in the community that spill outside of are driven a a lot by not taking preventative measures, not going upstream. And just wondering if you all have worked with some of those families as well, some of those groups as well. And um again, another thought is, as we talk about mental health, the social emotional supports, the call for action that that many of these parents have been longing for, and just wondering if you all have the opportunities to work together to learn from each other um and helping each other out. Again, your voices um have definitely helped their causes as well.
Yeah, as far as being able to help each other out, I know, uh you know, um you know, out of the gate, we were kind of in our, in our, in a bubble and dealing with the way we dealt with it.
Yes.
For me, um you know, developing a relationship with uh with the four families, especially with with um Steve and Craig, cause they're dudes, right? And they they get me, right? Um I'm a dude, I'm going through it, I'm a dad and um so it's been cool being able to talk to them about things and uh share with them kinda some of my battles and we don't talk a lot about it, cause we're dudes, but you know, um we share some things with each other and I think that's, that's helpful, know that somebody's in your boat and feeling the same thing you're feeling and going through what you're going through, so. Um you know, it's been, it's been cool since we've kinda locked our, our four families kinda locked arms on this um and gotten to know each other a lot better and um I, it's not making the he, it's not making the healing any easier. Um but at least you know there's somebody there that's feeling the same way you're feeling, you know, and that's before it kinda felt like I was on a, before we, before we all kinda locked arms on this, Sherry and I, our family felt like we were just on this island. You know, um so, you know, being connected with, for all the unfortunate reasons, we, you know, we've built this relationship, but I'm thankful for it, you know.
I I know what, like, like the offer Oxford Resiliency Center that was uh put in the and that has been tremendous and there's been a lot of uh, a lot of kids going there, a lot of programs that they have, um Common Ground is a very great organization that that really does care about um community and community health, mental health and um you know, just being present um within the community. Um and you know, that I I personally, um I'm kinda along with where Buck is, you know, I I I just have a kind of a, you know, a laid back, uh kinda off the beaten path kind of a guy, so I don't uh dive mainstream and everything and so I I have just had that remote feeling and and it is kind of grueling, you know, it's not, it's not fun to be uh consumed with your own thoughts and um especially when they're like with, revolved around that tragedy like this. But I I know that um a lot of my friends within the community have, they notice that kinda stuff and um you know, they pull me out quick and you know, it's important. Um coaches, you know, um neighbors, um support people like Cal and Danielle and Kristen, Kristen and Renee, they, I mean, they they are hardworking and they are willing to be the work for for us, you know, and and it's hard to ask, you know, I mean, especially for me, I don't know what to even ask, you know, it's not my um, it's not my ballgame, but it it really is my ballgame.
Yeah, I'll I'll kinda go over that too, it's um with the four families, it's really nice to have the guys on my side, cause I am usually the only girl sitting up here and sometimes it's a little harder for me to get my bearings, because obviously I bring a little bit more of the emotional aspect to it um as a mom, but with the community that's continuously, you know, stood behind us and the different aspects that are out there in regards to Easter seals and Common Ground, I work with them quite a bit um on a different level. It it's been very helpful for the rest of my family to, you know, have those connections and as much as I wouldn't want the connections, you know, the way I have to have them with the three families, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trade it, because it's is it, it's definitely a lot easier with them around and um and I appreciate them and our advocates and everybody else that's kinda stood behind us.
Thank you. Great.
Um I want you all to know that we welcome your voices at this table. This is um something that I definitely can identify with. I started advocating because of losing loved ones to gun violence. So um I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for some, you know, gun violence um initially in my journey, but I also wanna reassure you that this is a bipartisan issue for us. This is something that we all wanna support and work on. I know it's hard and frustrating and probably overwhelming navigating this system. And um it doesn't start with us because of local control, it doesn't start with us until the parents or someone comes to us. Um and so this is a lot to unpack and we wanna make sure that we are doing it properly. But we definitely support your efforts and we definitely wanna support you and we wanna do it the best way, you know, as a collective, come together and do it the best way that we can. Um we don't have authority, but we do have the bully pulpit and that is something.
Has a lot of them, so.
Bully pulpit. And and so um, you know, we get calls from parents all the time, I spend a lot of time advocating for parents and for students and working with MDE to do that. Um and the state superintendent and his staff has been wonderful. We're trying to help advocate and navigate, because we don't have that local control. But I just again, really appreciate you guys coming to the table. Um this is something that, when it happened, I was concerned too, I was calling the state superintendent, like, have you been to Hoxford? Which he did. You know, what You know, what, you know, what's going on? We, we weren't getting four reports or anything, uh, as well as, Belloc stated, the legislators didn't get four reports either. So, we need, we need you at the table, so we can understand, so thank you.
Thanks for having us.
So, so, so Karen, just, uh, one last thought. I'm one guy, but I am supportive of an independent state investigation based on what you shared today. Uh, there's more to discover, there's more to learn. And, uh, though the Guidepost report is quite substantial, as you point out, there are, there are gaps. Whether or not they can perfectly be filled in with a state investigation is a question. Two, whether the, um, whether people who are themselves looked askance at are necessarily the proper people to do an investigation or to lead an investigation or to call for an investigation is a question. But I do think that there's a power to a state investigating separately from an independent, from a, from a would-be independent entity. I mean, you, you have this, this, this awkward juxtaposition in what you said about, on the one hand, they're independent, on the other hand, we don't fully trust, given the linkages to which you refer in your presentation. And though those linkages don't disappear at the state level, one imagines that if you get up higher, you can see to a greater extent down below what took place, and more importantly, what might be able to be changed, um, in the future. Board, it is twelve thirty-one, we are going to recess for lunch. A staff will share where, where we are eating. Karen, we appreciate you, thank you so much. We will reconvene at three thirty, and we'll give a public comment at that time. Thank you.